Thank you very much. We'll get started. So, welcome to the, first of all, we're doing our annual general meeting, or what City Council, tonight being the twenty seventh of October, twenty twenty five. Then what City Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Calabar Fakunat peoples. As the traditional and original owners of Lutro Ega and continuing custodians of this land on which we gather, we also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders cast in Mepesent. So thank you, I can see that the poor houses start here as well, and our councillors, thank you very much. All persons in attendance are advised it is council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. All persons in attendance are to be respectful of and considerate towards other people attending and participating in the meeting. Any language or conduct that is considered offensive, defamatory, or threatening to any person attending or participating in the meeting or listening to the recording will not be accepted. Being an AGM and in reference to the AGM guidelines, as far as practicable, the meeting will be conducted as per an ordinary meeting of council and questions will be generally in accordance with council's public question to mind policy. The AGM meeting guidelines are outlined in item one of the meeting agenda. We're voting on this evening, I kindly ask that if you clearly wrote your cans with your issue voting card, when voting for an item, that would be great, thank you very much from the fence in the gallery. And may I get to be with me here? I've due to have apologies. Ah, so we've got councillor Martin, councillor Moore and councillor Barney, apologies this evening. Now, for the councillors that aren't here, do I have any declarations of interest through the AGM? All good? No, thank you. Sorry. Oh, and anyone in the, oh gosh, anyone in the gallery as well, if you've got any declarations of interest for the AGMs? Okay, they're all thinking about it now, hmm, all good. So item four is confirmation of minutes, so four point one. Is the confirmation that it's really AGM last year twenty fourth of October, twenty twenty four, the recommendation is there if I could have a move up please?
Certainly.
Oh, councillor Ennis, thank you, and councillor Murphy, thank you, councillor Ennis.
Nothing further.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you mayor, the minutes are there for all to see and they are an accurate reflection as much as you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the gallery or the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Ennis to close.
General applause.
Thank you. All those in favour?
I'm fine.
Against, carried unanimously, item five is the tabling of the annual report. So five point one. I will ask our CEO to have a quick report for us, thank you.
A pleasure to table councillor Andrew Report for the twenty four twenty five financial year. The annual report presents the major highlights in the last twelve months and highlights the council's performance against its budget, its annual plan actions and its capital works program. The annual report has been prepared in accordance with the requirements under section seventy two of the Labour Government Act. With copies being provided to the director of the Labour Government, director of the bill and the board of the general, as required by legislation. Full copy of council's financial statements and non-qualified audit opinion from the TES audit office are included as an attachment to the annual report. The annual report has been publicly released and invitations submissions have advertised in line with statute of obligations with those submissions being received. Twenty four twenty five financial year is the third year in term of this current council. And the achievements over the last twelve months contribute to the council's broad and full year term plan. Been a solid year for council, both in achievements and performance and also financially. The organisation has stayed true to its core purpose to lead and ambition of a thriving Devonport. Their major community events have included music on waterfront, the St Luke's TSA concert, the New Year's Eve celebrations. Domestic photo service was introduced at the start of the year and significant upgrades of the waste transfer station, investing in our environmental sustainability. Nineteen point six million of capital works were completed, ensuring the importance of community infrastructure is renewed and improved. We extended our network of very well-used shared pathways with the Sprayer Connector and the Don River Coles Bridge Link. The new grandstand change rooms and hawkers facilities in Valley Road were officially opened in June during the statewide cup final. Permits have been obtained and work is now underway on the new indoor sports centre at Devonport. Key partnerships have been established through the Mersey League and strategic alliance with our neighbouring councils and an MOU has been signed with the city of Craterjoln. In October, we celebrated ten years since the launch, launch of the Living City Master Plan, with the vision continuing to deliver. This year with the securing of a six million dollar federal government grant to progress the Phantom Weight Pressing and the announcement of a new forty million dollar planning map development at sixteen Steel Street at the entrance to the CBD. Financial result from ordinary activities was an adjusted operating surplus of two point nine million, up one point four on budget. This is the fifth consecutive year councils achieved a strong underlying surplus, highlighting a solid financial position of the organisation. From an operational perspective, the organisation's continued to evolve over the last twelve months, particularly in relation to ongoing digital transformation and the use of technology to enhance customer experience and provide efficient and effective service delivery. I would like to recall my thanks for the contribution and dedication of all our great staff who diligently go about their roles and serve the Devonport community. And I'd also like to take the opportunity, mayor, to thank the councillors, yourself and the councillors for their contribution and commitment to council and the community and for the support that you and the councillors provide yourself and the executive team. And then I trust this provides a brief overview and I commend to you councillors Andrew Report for twenty four twenty five, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Atkins, I appreciate that. Before we move into the six point one, which is the missions, questions on notice, the annual report and the recommendation is there, so I'm going to have a move up.
Certainly.
Councillor Deputy Mayor, into councillor Murphy, thank you, as a second chair. Deputy Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. This annual report is about the big picture for Devonport. It reflects words I often hear around the table from fellow councillors when they're workshopping ideas, go big or go home. Eleven years on from the release of the Living City Master Plan, the report shows this city has retained its laser-like focus on growth. Now, the report highlights our achievements in relationship prudent financial management, digital innovation, collaboration with our peak business body, the Devonport Chamber of Commerce and Industry, and above all, our collective goal of growing our vibrant economy in order to provide the community with quality services. The restructure within the council executive team is a notable element of the report because it signals to the market we're serious about investment. To have such senior resources proactively sourcing capital investment will only add to the livability of the city and infrastructure and services we can deliver to residents. The annual report notes tens of millions of dollars worth of infrastructure to support residents from sporting facilities to facilitating investment in mental health facilities and median density housing. Notably, the report also describes the strategic alliance formed with neighbouring councils. The best minds across Devonport, the tribe, condition central coast councils to join forces to chase regional opportunities for the industrial land or specific use projects such as the Devonport Regional Airport land. Mayor, the report highlights another strong year for the city of Devonport and a tremendous report by councillors.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, councillor Devonport.
Thank you, mayor, and obviously thank you Deputy Mayor, you're spot on with your analysis of what's been presented here this evening. I saw this question is well and truly asked quite often, and I might confidently say it was being well and truly answered. Are we in a better place than what we were ten years ago? Are we in a better place than what we were five years ago? The answer is definitely yes. There is no doubt that again, we are leading the way in local government within the state with respect to not just the innovation, but the professionalism within our council and our workforce. And that's evidence not only to the community, but to people outside of this community, and it's acknowledged nationally. So there's a real credit to the organisation and the direction in which we're heading. I think with the implementation of the term plan has been real positive for this council with respect to being focused on what we're wanting to achieve collectively, but more importantly, setting those, setting the future up for the next council. So it's really, really pleasing to see where we've come from in the journey of all, we've been here now seven years on council and to where we are, and it is a very, very bright future, I can assure you. Thank you.
Thank you. For the comments or questions from the councillors or gallery. Councillor Wilczynski.
Thank you, mayor. To put it simply, what we do and what our roles are, it is my third budget on the council as a councillor and I'm one of the voices for the community. As councillors, we recognise that effective governance is built on collaboration, mutual respect and a shared vision for our community. Teamwork within council management is not just a value, it is a necessity. By working together across our departments and our executive team and alongside our community stakeholders, we ensure that our planning is inclusive, strategic and forward-thinking. Teamwork in council management and planning is paramount for our city's future. Our collective roles is to anticipate future challenges, embrace innovation and make decisions that reflect both on the needs of today, aspirations of tomorrow. Whether it's responding to cost of living pressures, which we hear a lot about at the moment, investing in infrastructure, enhancing community wellbeing, our strength lies in our unity. To effectively understand and communicate the cost of living, not only just for general public, but also in business and the city, city's council. We speak about the cost of living and inflation trends with the residents changing household, change, sorry, in household expenses, food, transport, health and utilities, business in their operation, costs of wages, rent, insurance, supply cost and energy, the council budget pressures, service delivery, infrastructure maintenance, waste management, community services, staff wages and a whole lot more. Investing in the arts and the culture and the events. Use some of what council delivers in our well put together document showing what we've been about in this last twelve months. With this through open communication and shared responsibility and the commitment to transparency, we will continue to build a resilient, sustainable and thriving future for our city. I commend what the management team has worked with and has done and fellow councillors for our city.
Great effort. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, mayor. There was a lot of things that the CEO, Mr Atkins, mentioned and I just want to gloss over a couple of them, I'd like to mention them again. The development at Bier Park has been sensational for the users down there, it's been fantastic. It's well overdue and it's now a great facility for everyone, so that's, that's, that's an awesome thing. The start of the indoor sports centre down there is, is a huge landmark for our city. It's going to be something that will be remembered for a long time and in the way that the, the city or the council and everyone involved has managed to pull this together. I often get asked by people around the state, how does Devonport do that? Why are you having this? What's going on there? I get that all the time. It is extremely positive. Not only in that, but our living well programmes are fantastic. They are impressive and we need to support the health and wellbeing of our community and that's great. The final thing, and it sort of gets mentioned quite a bit, but the digital and ICT advancements of the Devonport City Council are well and above and beyond anyone in the state, so that is just, needs to be highlighted continually. A lot of the people that I speak with, I get very positive feedback about, oh, Devonport are doing this, oh, yes, fantastic with this and that. So these are really positive things that, that we sort of are used to, but people need to realise that we are leading the way in, in many of these things, so fantastic job everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holster.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Briefly, I think most of us men said that I think council and staff, facilitation of all the construction that's going on around the city speaks for itself. And I think the city is doing extremely well, completely different to four, fifteen years ago. I think the work with council and the staff, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the gallery at all?
On comment?
That's all, if you want to, if not.
Is it questions or comment?
No, 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 any comments?
Comment, yes.
You know what's going, Mr Bellerbuck, you can help there.
You know who I am, yes, I'm a better keeper to the regulation.
You're, you're being strange, so people will watch.
Okay, you've been, well, I've been a little bit of a cock in place, yes. Um, yes, it is great to see that the council is moving ahead. And, and I think, yes, we, we are getting, that some of the parts of the city, yes, we're getting very proud of. But of course, there's other areas that I believe is being neglected through that and more about that later. But I know it's quite an onerous task for some councillors to attend every month and the workshops and yes, there is a certain remuneration and that apart from that, I think generally, yes, this we, we have got a city that we are starting to be proud of in particular areas and I hope that it continues that way, thank you.
That's lovely to hear from you, Mr Bellerbuck, I really appreciate that.
Comment, just a couple of quick questions on the report.
Hi, Mr Collins.
Hello, mate. We're cooking the gas, yes. I can go and fall by my drive mine there. Yeah, look, congratulations to everybody on what looks to be another successful year. Financial wise, management wise, yeah, looks to be going well. Which is good to see and I can probably back up Bob's comments there. Yeah, areas of the city we are becoming proud of and, and that's good. I'll just, took one thing off page fifty five of the community grants, I've just got one question there. Devonport Chamber of Commerce partnership agreement, I said seventy thousand dollars from memory, it used to be forty, has that been increased for a reason? Or is it, am I mixing up a couple of different things?
Fifty five?
Page fifty five of the.
Through you, Ned. There's actually two years paid in one.
Oh, so there hasn't been any growth?
There's been no, no significant increase, maybe CPI.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking that Bernie got seventy grand a year and I thought that might have been catching off, that was all. As far as that, that arrangement with the Chamber of Commerce, would council be interested in funding a properly formed residential rate pass association?
Funding?
Yeah, residential rate pass association. I'll leave that one. I'll leave that one with you. And just one other quick question. I think I've read somewhere, I only flashed through all of these things, I don't delve into the, the order of accounts and the rest of it much these days. I, I think we've got a fair swag of cash on hand. To some reason, I'm thinking, was it forty seven million? What proportion of that is from forward paid government grants, et cetera? And I think that might be in the order of reports too when I breeze past, but you might just confirm that for me.
All right, Mrs Ennis can help you with the answer.
Through you, ma'am. There's twenty million that, of that fund, of that amount, that is for forward grants.
That's twenty million, the rest is, the rest is?
Our cash.
Right, right, cash, thank you very much, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you, nice to see you here tonight.
Mayor, if I may ask, if I understood, it was just comments, I did have some specific questions in.
To the annual report?
Yes.
To the annual report?
That's my, so, thank you.
You know the rules, go for it.
Mayor, I refer to the annual report in regard to council's workers' compensation. Reference page sixteen, if you could look up to that. I find the following is most disturbing to read, that there were nine claims lodged with council's insurer for the year ending the thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty five and a gross value of a hundred and three thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty five cents with three current open claims and thirteen lodged before year ending thirtieth of June two thousand and four, twenty four and a gross value of one hundred and sixty eight thousand two hundred and seventy seven fifty cents with two current claims, open claims. It appears Devonport is somewhat a dangerous place to work to me. Will the chief exec officer reveal some details in regard to what types of accidents is occurring and whether most of the claims are for indoor or outdoor employees? Secondly, also a question why safety incidents involving the workplace, which are most important when they occur, are not reported in more detail rather than just a bland statistic in the meeting agenda?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Look, we don't make public the details of individual worker comp claims.
No, I realize that.
However, we, yeah, certainly share your, your concerns, we aim for zero incidents and accidents in our workplace and we're continuing to strive for that. We've certainly made some big inroads in, in safety in recent years and it's pleasing to see the value of claims has reduced to lower state the last four years, recognising that yet nine claims are still nine claims too many, we'll continue to aim for zero harm.
Yeah, we hope so. It's very concerning, being in, in industry where the, pardon me, we had to answer to the Sydney Board of a large company and in fact, safety was listed on the top of their agenda when they met and that's why I'm bringing it up here, that, you know, it doesn't appear to be, thank you, I'll continue, thank you.
Sure.
I also refer to the medical treatment injury frequency rate for two thousand and twenty four five being twelve point four four days. Am I correct in interpreting that one of the council employees because of workplace injury has to have medical treatment every twelve to point four four days? How do you, how do you decipher or determine that?
Through you, I believe that is that, that, unless that rates made up well, so that counts, if anything from getting a Band-Aid out of the first aid box and through to more serious events, so it's not lost time injuries.
Not lost, just not lost times, but there's, there's twelve, twelve of them nonetheless, yeah. I, I just go back to my question one, in, in regard to, can you tell us at least whether it's indoor or outdoor employees? I mean, that's not.
Yeah, through, predominantly, yeah, high risk areas are outdoors, so it predominantly had more worker comp claims.
Yes, okay.
Just the nature of the.
And what about the indoor ones? Is there any indoor, does that include psychological problems?
Wow.
It includes all worker comp claims, once we're going to talk about the city's reach, but it depends, say, the majority of our accidents happen. Unfortunately, now on run. Can I add to what?
Thank you.
Thanks. Any further comments or questions at all? I will just say that, you know, again, very proud to present such an amazing report. A lot of work has gone into it and I thank all the staff. This report is something that, you know, each of the councils have, we pass it out to the public out there. Um, uh, this report is something that, you know, each of the councils have. We pass it out to the public out there. Um, uh, anyone can get a copy of it here from the council. Uh, the information is all there. We're very open and transparent about what we do here at this council. And may I say, one of the best performing councils in my opinion in Chasmania, let alone the rest of the country. Um, and watch this space, you know, we've got a few cranes out and about. You like cranes. I know you like cranes. Mister Atkins, and, uh, I can just imagine how many cranes are known to be about in the next couple of years as well. So, um, it just shows that there's a lot of progress happening here. I suppose what I will point out to everybody out there, this community is thriving. This, this city is doing really well. Everything we do in Devonport, we think regionally. We're the hub. People work, live and play and live outside of our council boundary. But, um, there is so much going on, but I just want people to be aware that that means we're going to get busier. Yes, that will make more traffic. That will make more construction going on around us. We want everyone to take care and, and be aware of these things. Um, if you want to find out what's going on in council, we try everything we can to get the information out there via social media. Um, there's only so much we can do though, but it doesn't mean that you can't get in on our website and make a request and ask the question. We've got a really foolproof, um, way of getting that information in from, um, the people out there. Don't just put it on Facebook. Um, let us know. All we can do is find out the information and do the best of our ability to get back to you and let you know what's going on or fix things. So, um, I'm certainly very proud of it and, uh, looking forward to this next year. So I will ask therefore, given that you're shooting to close the debate.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, you know, commend the comments of fellow councillors and, um, comments from the. Um, rate payers present tonight and yourself and CEO, I'm nothing further than.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Very generously, thank you. Mine is certain this motion's on notice. Seven point one is the notice of motion from Mr. Velocock. So I'm assuming Mr. Velocock would like to move the motion first before you speak.
Okay.
Yes, and do I have a second, uh, please? Mr. Galloway, thank you. Mr. Velocock?
Thank you, ma'am.
There are formally moved this my, um, notice of motion. And it follows that the electors here present of this, the Devonport City Council two thousand and twenty-five general meeting. Given that the current council debt is as at the thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty-five. Was forty-three point five five million. And the rental income of Market Square Pavilion in council's current year budget. Is approximately two thousand, sorry, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Being only approximately sixty-six percent of the guaranteed four hundred thousand a year that rate payers were told would be available. We therefore request the mayor and councillors to take such action necessary. For the early sale of the real estate now known as Market Square Pavilion. So as to enable it to be listed for sale by auction at a reserve price dictated by the council. And if the property is sold, the proceeds of the sale will be paid off the council that incurred to build it. Now, I'm not quite sure here, ma'am. I had the rationale to sell this Market Square Pavilion. And it's printed in the, um, uh, uh, agenda as a support. But I, I, I'm not quite sure if you want me to read that or go on to my, um, not, not, um, speak to the motion.
It's all there for people to read, that was sent out.
Okay, so speak to the motion. Thank you. Mayor and councillors, ladies and gentlemen, this is only but a very brief resume of the reasons why council should sell the property situated in Old Acre Street. It has been openly admitted by a former councillor that the strategic purpose for holding Market Square Pavilion is no longer valid. The property, property's current use bears little semblance for what was originally sprue to be to be. It's everything that it wasn't supposed to be. Rate payers were seriously misled when told yearly income of four hundred thousand was guaranteed. It was never anywhere near that amount. I had to hand a, a unredacted copy of the strictly private and confidential two thousand and six head lease agreement. Incidentally, it took exactly three years and six months to obtain. The content of which enables me to factually state. The amount was a fantasy and a lit- lit- list near while statements to justify building it. Were grossly exaggerated and were delusional, if in fact deceptive, if not in fact deceptive. If council had applied its own funding model criteria, which was, which were published to the community. And the good governance principles as noted by the auditor general. Plus proper due diligence, the food pavilion, now known as Market Square Pavilion, would not have been built. Council are now directly completing with private sector. Council has said it recognises the values of transparency and accountability. Bearing that in mind, the past secrecy of most matters pertaining to the premises. The evasive answers, responses given to questions asked. As well as their avoidance in answering many questions has been of great concern. Fortunately, I think that's been. Market Square Pavilion has so many issues, only the private sector can realistically provide the level of incentives needed. For the premises, so as for them to be free of criticism from other retailers and comply at all times for fair trading. I again remind, it's a well-known fact when councils get involved in businesses, there's always unintended consequences. If the property remains in council's hands, it will be continuing encumbrance or millstone around the next for rate payers. And future councillors. I believe after construction, the government val- valuation indicated that its worth was some. Some five point seven million or less than its original cost. And in my opinion indicates that something must have been seriously remiss in its planning. Also a concern will be ongoing costly maintenance of the structure. Councillors must face the facts and be honest. Because if they do not support this motion and sell the property, the real reason. It will be because it crystallises the loss of monumental proportion. That none among the council past or present want the responsibility for. Rate payers are now fully responsible for the total council debt. As at the thirtieth June two thousand and twenty-five of approximately forty-three point five five million. And it would be considered prudent if the proceeds, if sold, are used to reduce the debt. More so because there will be a number of fixed loans that will come during the coming years, will mature during the coming years. Indeed, Alderman, Ellis and Jarman, who we all know now as now Mayor Ellis and Jarman. Was certainly on the right track when in November the six, six, two thousand and seventeen, as reported in the advocate. She expressed concern that rate payers faced the possibility of facing twenty years of risk. Because of the need to borrow at that time an amount of thirty-nine million. Also, Alderman Jarman said the living city upgrade was always meant to be funded by federal cash. Cash in kind support from state government and the public sector. It appears the debt is being reduced at a rate that appears rate payers who haven't been born yet will be responsible for. I look forward to hearing from other speakers for and against my motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Velocock. Mr. Galloway?
All right.
Would you like to speak to it? You've seconded the motion.
Uh, speaking till we hear from any other speakers, particularly those that want to oppose the motion.
You want to speak in a different time, even though you said so. Okay, so you seconded for a discussion.
Yeah.
So, so.
Yeah, I'd like to speak there.
Any.
Do you go one for one with debates? Have we got any speakers that want to oppose the?
Just bear with me on running the baby, not you. Thank you. So if any of the councillors would like to speak to the motion. Mr. Galloway, councillor, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am, although it may not be in the correct order because, uh, I will be supporting the motion, um. For a number of different factors, um, whilst Mr. Velocock has. Obviously gone through and, and been very efficient and, and factual in a lot of this information. I think there's a lot of that, uh, of what Mr. Velocock has spoken through, um, I think we've moved past, however. Taking into consideration, and, and this has been brought up, uh, in council at varying times, um. I do believe that economically, I think the city's in a great position to go and sell, not potentially just that particular asset, but. Probably open up a broader conversation about selling others as well, um, with the focus and that burning, um, debt reduction. Uh, taking into consideration that we will have somewhere in the order of around about twenty-eight million dollars. Coming off fixed interest loans and variable loans that will mature, um, next year. Uh, in the first quarter for one and the third quarter for the other, uh, both in the third quarter. Um, is something that we need to consider. Take the look at, yes, interest rates are coming down. Albeit slowly, however, we don't have crystal ball. We don't know what will happen with those. Having said that, knowing the current interest rate, it does pose a potential situation where. Um, we are going to have a, a significant loan come off a very, very low interest rate. Now, if that goes into the current market, it is going to see a significant increase in the interest that will, that loan will attract. That money has to come from somewhere. So whilst, um, and I also believe that, um, I think. Again, in the current economic climate, there would be a significant opportunity for a private operator to come into that space. Who would be able to leverage off the success of what we're seeing upstairs. Um, and I also believe that a private operator would actually be able to deliver. Um, something unique for the region, um, at a far. Probably a better value for money instead of council having to make that investment. I think that, um. Someone from the private sector could develop that, that site and actually, um, see it achieve or could be achieved. And it is something that we do seriously need to consider. Uh, obviously, the process with these notices to motion, I'll come back to council at our next council meeting for us to discuss. Um, but I, I would propose, um, that we then consider this notice of motion and let's take it to a workshop. And to actually explore all the opportunities that do exist. Um, for us as councillors to make a decision in the interests of the community. Where we can potentially provide, um, a, 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 an avenue or a pathway. Um, to look at reducing some of that debt that is going to mature next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the councillors? Councillor Shane?
Um, yeah, starting, uh, councillor Murphy's comments, we have sort of discussed this in workshop and, um, in more informed settings. Previously, and I'll just repeat what, you know, I've discussed with him before and other councillors, um. I think with all the council, right, uh, with all council assets, um, they are always constantly being. Reviewed, um, at appropriate junctures, um. And, and we examine whether or not, you know, we should be holding particular assets, not just Market Square, but across the city, um. For a very long time, I felt there are a number of assets that we could perhaps dispose of and I, I, I haven't sensed any pushback from. From the council staff, but it all comes down to the timing and I, and I guess this is where I would describe councillor. Murphy in the, um, the presence of the motion. I, I'm looking at commercial rents. Um, in Devonport at the moment, I, I still think there's a bit of room to move there and, um. The first reason I wouldn't be supporting the motion is I, I just feel. You've got to, when you, not specific to this asset, but any asset, you've got to look at when you sell it and I, I don't believe the timing is right. At the moment, but more than I have to discuss when that timing might be in workshop. More importantly, um. I'd like to talk to the community benefit that that common area section has, so. We know that Market Square, the, uh, retail tendencies are, are leased, there's no vacancy and I understand the list at market value. But it's that common area that I'm interested in at the moment because the city is, is growing so quickly. The Paranormal Centre frequently uses Market Square as overflow space. Not just the Paranormal Centre, but also the Devonport Gallery. Um, for this year alone, there's a total of thirty-four events being held in that common area. Um, the Devonport High School Leaders Dinner. Volunteers Breakfast, which a number of our guests tonight in the gallery would be attending. Homelessness Week for the Catholic Care, Fair Brothers Charity Event and the Tard event. There are, there are a host of public events and I'm not sure whether a private owner. Would offer, uh, those community groups, um, the generous, um, generosity that council. You know, has a mandate to provide. So I guess without waffling too much, it's a timing issue. Um, I think any asset that council owns should, should be regularly examined as to whether it might be disposed of or not. Uh, but I would be firmly against, um, even looking at Market Square at this point in time. Due to commercial reasons and the heavy use, um, by community.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway, did you want to? I thought you wanted to, if you. Wanted you, wanted to refer back to somebody, I.
Oh, Karen, well, they says the other one told.
Again, it's not to you to ask. I'm asking you, would you like to speak, Mr. Galloway?
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Ah, well, um. Well, thank you, ma'am. Um. Pleased to hear some support and some thought and, uh, I concur with everything councillor Murphy said. Um, what I'm going to say, don't. Risk and screw this with referring to anything else other than the building now known as Market Square Pavilion. Um, and, uh, we're often, I'm going to repeat aspects of what, uh, Mr. Velocock said, um. For the benefit of probably new councillors and to get a handle on why, uh, that particular, um, building. Um, I'm, I certainly hope that councillors learn a lot from that building. And I think council has learned a lot from that building and I have some confidence that it won't, we won't see a repeat of that. So. A little bit of background, the formerly named Proplo Place, since we named it Market Square. Was built for a reported cost of about ten million excluding the land value. Which falls in the initial estimated cost of eight point six million, um. To be funded from a three million dollar federal grant and a five point six million dollar loan on the rate base credit card. A value of general report, a property evaluation undertaken in two thousand and nineteen. Only months after the opening indicated a value of two million eight hundred and forty thousand dollars excluding the land value. So based on construction costs versus the value of general valuation. Any final fee to rate players taking massive financial haircut. Certainly, an asset return of thirty cents in the dollar on the build cost. Is not a project that any prudent private developer would have undertaken. And I suspect not even other people's money, let alone borrowed money. In the letter from council dated twentieth of, of July twenty twenty. The residual loan amount for Proplo Place was listed as four million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The twenty insulted injury council has over the period written off or failed to pursue tenant debts of over four hundred thousand. Cost to rework tenant fit outs plus undisclosed subsidies for various utility services for a period of time in the past. It should also not be overlooked that around four hundred thousand was expended on purchasing and then demolishing properties in Old Acre Street. Uh, to, to clear the site. This exercise in council being the developer and lease or has resulted in this investment of taxpayer and rate payer dollars. Being an abject financial disaster. So why not keep ownership thinking the worst has passed? Well, in addition to the above loss and having already flushed three million of taxpayer dollars down and drained interest payments since completion in two thousand and seventeen. Would I suggest conservatively be around eight hundred thousand and cumulative growing at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year? A few eight years ago, I questioned council approach to only paying down consolidated total debt by just over a million dollars per annum. Council's response at the time was that it was to ensure intergenerational equity. In repaying the loan despite paying loan interest for far longer. Council agreed with my assessment that it was kicking debt down the road. An earlier analogy by a council that living city debt was like buying a house and most have a mortgage to pay is. An earlier analogy by a council that living city debt was like buying a house and most have a mortgage to pay is valid. However, financial advisors counsel, the best way to save substantial money long term is to pay a mortgage down as quickly as possible. Council's defence of its loan reduction strategy, it didn't make sense then, and it doesn't make sense today. Based on the current level of loan repayments towards council's consolidated debt, which Market Square Pavilion debt is serviced within. The residual loan debt on Market Square Pavilion would still conservatively. Be pushing four million, I would think today, and require servicing for a further decade or more. Council's core business has never been subsidising selected private enterprises with ratepayer dollars in compet- in competition to other businesses. Council's former G M was reported to saying when Fenton Villa was sold. That providing accommodation for the elderly is. Um that I would argue that providing accommodation is closer to a core business than buying property developer. And landlord to private enterprises. In fact, the same G M appeared to have agreed when reported to saying in two thousand and sixteen, that, and I quote. Running a food pavilion is not core council business. Therefore, cutting the ratepayer's losses and loan debt. By selling the Market Square Pavilion, always only paying down its loan debt. Should be fully investigated by councillors with full knowledge as with fast flushing of, without exaggeration. Millions of dollars of taxpayer and ratepayer dollars down the drain. And with complete honesty to themselves as to the real ongoing costs. The real ongoing cumulative costs to ratepayer into the foreseeable future from keeping the building. Now, I know this motion is not binding. On council, but I only do it to support it, so the councillors should at least consider it. Thank you, Mia.
Thanks, Mister Garden. Councillor Holstone?
I'm not going to support the motion. I believe it's very premature. We know that there's a government and private enterprise investment into this area. We probably won't send G A for a couple of years, because some construction that's going on. At the moment is completed and tennis moving. So I think at this stage, it's very premature. Thank you.
Thank you. Other points or questions from? Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. Um yes, it's quite interesting that Mister Verlik, Mister Garden, who had. A deep focus on Promodore Place at the time, uh continuing to sort of uh follow up on this. Uh. There's no doubt that it was a challenging time for council. The lessons have been learned. And we're we're intending to move on now. The whole place is quite different to what it was imagined to begin with. The head Lucy is gone, the general manager's gone, and all probably as a result of uh of Promodore Place and how it all went. But if we look now. It is turning into quite a different space and and being a great space. We just need to probably forget, learn the lessons from the past of Promodore Place. And move forward as Market Square Pavilion. And and just look at the great benefits that we have for our city. That we uh can support many community uh groups, events and so forth in that space, so. Um yes, I I do understand the angst uh that that building has uh has created. But I think there's some real positives that come out of it as well.
Thank you. Um Mister Brannich?
Hello, I do.
Hello, Mia. And so thanks, Mia, in my capacity, you brought Brannich and I in Chalmers Lane as a ratepayer. Um most of what's been said around, that's pretty right, except Mister Velocost's point about people set up as a farmer's market, and I must have not yet grabbed that the first part, so. Um couple of points, one is the motion's very definitive and says put this to auction, so. Take Mister Murphy's point, you you wouldn't go straight for that, you would workshop it first, and I guess that's what we had. Just another comment on that and following now councillor Deputy Mayor's comments. You look what's happening in this area now, so Marin is at half, one point six billion, Robins Island, one point four billion, that's three. And when Robins Island goes, H O F Global goes, you know, I'm burning it, so one point seventy million, you've then got um Alcsonson on the West Coast. Um I've got numbers here, six and seven billion, so. There's a lot, there's a lot going to happen in this in this region over the next sort of five to ten years, so. Uh if I had real estate like that now, why would we sell it? Thank you.
Thanks, Mister Brannich. Any further comments at all?
Question?
Um.
Sure.
Thanks, Mia. I just wanted to pick up on the deputy mayor's points with respect to some of the events that occur in that space.
Yep, yep.
Um just just for clarification. Um I'm assuming that the volunteer breakfast would be at a council event, so obviously the council wouldn't be paying. But are the other events charged for that space, or is it uh quite readily given um that it's a public space? Because I'm under the impression that there is a a daily or an event hire rate for the space. Um so I'm assuming that Devonport High School, sitting on the finance assistance working group. Um that we don't see um applications for in kind assistance to providing that space, so. Is it fair to assume that they actually pay to use that space?
Okay, so then, yeah, yeah, if you like, so Deputy Mayor asked me for this, but it was. Uh there since um just this year, and there was thirty four events, I think, thirty one events. Uh mix mixture of paid, commercial events, community events and free events. It all through.
Thank you.
So this is a follow up question, so the the space does provide the opportunity, and I'm assuming if someone did. Um want to invest in it, they they would probably capitalise on on utilization of the fact that they could attract events. Um to contribute to the in the revenue stream of the facility. Um so it would still be there for what um the public, if they did want to use it, would that be a fair fair question to say?
That's a good question.
Oh, true. Well.
Or a question for a real estate agent?
Well, thanks, Mia. Um if I may, I I will just say, um Mister Velcom. Surprised by your notice of motion, you've always had a bit of a bugbear about that spot property down there, I have no doubt. Um I just don't think it's the time, in my personal opinion, I don't think it's the time to sell it. Um we're not saying we won't sell it, um it's certainly an asset for us to look at into the future, and at some stage it might be the case. But I don't think this is the time to do it. Um I've never seen so many um great uh organizations or or um events that have been overutilized. Marcus Square Pavilion under the council banner, and I'm really pleased that it's part of what we do here so well at the Paranormal Centre. Uh as a break off space, I've had Dallas down there. Um we're starting to really utilize it even better, to the point where we're now looking at making it into a black box theatre if we can get some funding for it. Because it's something that we're really missing. Um I think we're just on the cusp of actually making it into a better asset than ever for council use. And I will just point out, Mister Garden, just one question on, one one statement you made that I I must put clarity to. And you said about our previous general manager.
Yep.
He said that this is not called council business. I'm just mugging me.
I I'll show you the.
I know, I'm making the comment. Just give me a chance, Mister Garden. Thank you. Um he said it wasn't called council business, neither is Living City, but my word. Most councils in this country don't do core council business anymore. And the reason being is we really rely on state and federal government, and it's been lacking. And local governments are now really the forefront for getting things done in their areas. And this council is one of them, and I'm really proud of where we're getting to. I certainly was one of the first to criticize this in the beginning. I admit it, I know I said what I said, and I still don't have a problem with what I said at the time. But then I said to both of you, I will now do, because it was endorsed by council. I will now do everything in my power to make this place successful, and I'm still doing that. And I think we're doing a really great job, so I'll leave it to that. Mister Velcom, it is your chance to close. Thanks, Mister Garden. You know, for the micropower, Mister Mister Velocop will go. It's his chance. Thank you. Mister Velcom?
I'll do the life, you mean, thank you.
Now, in councillors, I was pleased to hear from those those who would support my motion and those who would no, no doubt vote against it. Uh I thank those, of course, who've supported my motion. It's disappointing that um there was not more speaking actually against it. And I'd like to just ask, if I may, uh Mister Brannich, when he mentioned about.
This, no, you're just you're just praising it.
Yes, but it's to actually clarify something he said, and I'm referring to it, and it's part of my thing. And and could I ask Mister Brannich, when when he mentioned that I, that it appeared that I got something wrong about the market? Could he, could he clarify that?
That's meant to be doing a closing statement, Mister Velocop. Thank you.
So this, I'm not your.
Part of it.
Uh I'll I'll I apologize then.
Thank you.
Ob- obviously, and I find that there would have been some here present who had very limited knowledge of the facts regarding the property. Hopefully, they will now have, if nothing else, a better understanding about the past mismanagement and the real possibility of problems in the future. If council continues to own Market Square Pavilion. Um with the all the extra developments around the city. I think what we should be looking at forward in the future is our rates being reduced rather than increased. It's obvious with all the the land, where land is being sub, um. Blocks of land that were, only one residents now had two, so there's more income. You've got the new development there um uh next to Harvey Norman and others that listed. Um thi- this would indicate far more rates coming in than you have in the future, even by stabilizing it. So I hope they are stabilized, and it it is possible, I believe, in the future that they could be reduced. I have nothing further to add and conclude by asking all electors here present, who have the best interest of this city and our trade players. To support this motion for council to sell the property situated seventeen Old Acre Street, Devonport. Thank you.
Thanks, Mister Velcom. So if I can just remind everybody that's in the area to utilize these please, um all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
And against? Okay, well, draw a count to our show of hands, including these. Councillor Murphy, Mister Velocop, Mister Garden, Mister Jenny and Mister Segman. And against, councillor Ennis, councillor Gilczynski. Mister Elixir, Miss Conley, Mister Brannich, councillor Holstone, councillor Sheen and Rossett. Thank you. Motion is lost. Thank you very much for that. We'll move on to general business. If there is any general businesses, it's your opportunity now to come up and ask any questions or. Chat to our council. Nothing, we will move on to closing then. So thank you very much for attending our AGM for twenty twenty five. We're closing at six twenty nine PM. Thank you very much. We'll take a short break, five minutes, five minute break, just to get reset, and then we'll start with our normal uh meeting for tonight. Thank you. Ordinary council meeting at the Goodwood Street Council for the Monday, 27th October. It's been 6:30 PM. The apologies will be the same for our councillors. Do I have any declarations of interest from the councillors for this section? Your suspicion?
Councillor Shane, 6.1. It's just a note in the workshop that I'm an advanced sponsor, I won't be putting them on.
You're saying?
Yeah, just a note in the workshop.
Thank you. Any other declarations of interest from the councillors? No, thank you. So remember, not procedural. 3.1 is the confirmation of the minutes, if I can have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and second up. So second. Councillor Gilmour Chinskey, just make sure you've got your... Yeah, that's me. Remind your phone, so second. Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
It's all there for everyone, so.
Thank you. Councillor Gilmour Chinskey.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any further comments from the councillors? If not, I will ask Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider the closing.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. 3.2 is public question time. Here we begin. If anyone from the gallery would like to come up and ask a question, you certainly may do so.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, 3.2. I'm in the, I'm in the wrong session. Please, Mr. Velocock.
That's why.
I haven't clicked the right button. 3.2.1 is the responses to questions raised at primary meetings. There are a great majority, I need to do that one first. 3.2.1, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second up?
Second.
Councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
All the responses are there, so.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any further comments from the councillors? Not last, Councillor Murphy, closed.
Consider closing.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. 3.2.2 is questions on notice from the public. I have none. 3.2.3. Hold on, here we go.
Thank you.
Questions without notice from the public. Thank you, Mr. Velocock.
Okay. For the record, Bob Velocock's living copper place, Devonport. Mayor, I noted in the AGM agenda, and I've left this for the specific reason, if denied, agenda on the website, reference page six, reference at the end of the first paragraph, it has a link, a direct link to the annual report. If the computer can now perform that task, then will the CEO explain why it cannot also include direct links to other attachments and reports? I've asked this question before, but here it is in the agenda, here there's a direct link. And I can't see any reason why the agenda on the website can't have that. You pointed it, I pointed this out before. To the attachments.
Through you, Mayor, the reason we previously gained, provided, remains. We don't have, can't need them on the normal agenda. The reason it's different for the AGM agenda is because it's actually developed up in Word documents separately, outside of the, outside of the software that we use for the normal agenda.
Well, I thought with all the expenditure and everything else, I mean, some of the two programs that I've received from people that they were able to do it. And it just saves so much time and people can just click straight through instead of...
I understand what you're saying.
And it just amazes me that that's not possible. Okay.
All right, thank you.
It has been recent, question two. It has recently been reported that the developer for the new Stony Rise Shopping Complex hopes to make an early start in 2020, so that's next year. Six, can you give an update in regard to the traffic safety upgrades at the junction of Stony Rise Road and French Street, which I understand must take place before commencement of the project? There's quite a lot of threat here, don't you believe?
That's correct. There's a condition on the permit that any section of French Street and Stony Rise needs to be signalled before the supermarket is occupied. I will note, the developer, I believe, is running an information session sometime soon, so there'll be an opportunity for members of the public to come along if you want to ask city questions.
Yeah, but I thought, yeah, you know, seeing as it's a state road thing, there are two involved, and council would have thought you would have been kept, obviously they're not keeping you up to date with it. You know, you're telling me that's a fact, is it? You just don't know what's happening through three hours.
That's not a fact, no. Like I said, the, there's an upgrade, so it's currently under design to signalise that intersection and the condition of permit is that's completed prior to the supermarket opening.
The forum will be on, so you can come along to that and ask one question.
Yeah, okay.
Well done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions from the gallery? If not, we'll move along. Thank you very much. 3.3 is questions without, oh, sorry, 3.2.3. Questions from the councillors is 3.3. 3.3.1, questions on notice from the councillors are none. 3.3.2 is questions without notice from the councillors. Which there are none as well. 3.4, sorry, is not the motion, there are none. So we're moving into item four, which is planning authority matters. I'll now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under Regulation 29 of the local government. Regulations 2025 and Malangie's Planning and Approval Act 993 for the consideration of all reports under, continuing to section four. 4.1 being 72 Percy Street, if I could have a move or the information set.
So moved.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy and a second up?
Second up.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, it just seems to be a thing now, which is quite reasonable within today's sort of economic climate, if you like. Obviously, it's not enough visitor accommodation. With this, it did attract one representation, however, it was suitably answered by our planners. So having said that, the recommendation is that support it, which I believe we should.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister.
Interesting that this box actually backs on to where the internal film from Harry Murray's nose used to be. And it says it's all built up, which has got nothing to do with this property. And the parents have been driven and to be acceptable, I also thought much.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? If not, not last, Councillor Murphy, closed.
Consider closing.
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? Carried unanimously, thank you. Files reports, 5.1, the National Trust Testament in Partnership Agreement, if I could have a move please. You're lighting, thank you. If I could have a move please of 5.1?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second up? Councillor Hollister, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Mayor, the recommendation actually...
Thank you.
Actually calls to nominate councillor as well.
Oh, sorry.
That's the reason why I think there was a visitation with respect to moving the recommendation. Or obviously, one is we do have three other councillors not here.
That could have taken us an hour, but it's not.
Has someone decided to put their hand up?
Well, now it starts on... Any feel that that is a mover of the recommendation, Councillor Murphy?
I'd be happy to put my hand up if your workload was too heavy there, Mayor.
Councillor Murphy, if you might be on it, I would be...
Therefore, then there may be a...
Change of the move of the motion.
Correct, Mayor.
We might do that. So if I have a move of the motion for Councillor Murphy to be on this new joint working group. Councillor Sheen, thank you. Councillor Hollister is to order second up. Thank you, Councillor Murphy, for putting your hand up. Councillor Sheen and Councillor Hollister, Councillor Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, Home Hill should be one of the... I really hold a crowd on it. Home Hill, which will be the core focus, nine stands of National Trust in this regard, is one of our most treasured assets, and I can think of no one better than Councillor Murphy to be in there, representing the city's interests and Home Hill's interests in that regard. Thank you. Councillor Hollister.
Yes, I support the recommendation. I just hope that this committee has more success than I've had in getting federal government funding, which is where it should come in, that there's a lot of this area.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I must admit, Councillor Hollister, it's a Don River Railway, can do it, almost anyone can. So I have high hopes for this wonderful area to actually finally get some funding so that they can do some amazing things up there. If not, I will ask, I didn't know if you were going to speak, sorry, Councillor.
Yeah, I will, Mayor. Yeah, I follow one from Deputy Mayor Sheen's point. I think this is, you know, a significant asset for our community. And I do believe it's been an extremely long time, and there has been a number of false stats with respect to seeing this being achieved, what it can potentially achieve. It is a very well patronised community asset, not just from locals, but also from interstate international visitors. And I think moving, you know, to protecting that is extremely important. I think there's a real opportunity and there's potentially an appetite out there now. We've really just got to, you know, hit it with some gusto and have a fair old crack and, you know, really put this on the radar because it is a significant site. And I'd be ashamed to see that diminished and potentially lost in the future. Whereas I think with what could be achieved there and the conversations that need to be had, yeah, it's something that really just needs to be...
Thank you. I will ask Councillor Sheen to close for debate.
Thank you, Mayor. You've got the right person job there. Well done. And thank you, Councillor Murphy.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously, thank you. 5.2 is disposal of public land, right street in Devonport, all the information's there. Oh, that shout. 5.2, Councillor Ennis, I'll give it to you, Councillor Murphy. Councillor against?
This will be a piece of land that was not much use to us, but it will be fantastic use or a port of origin.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, Mayor, it was just merely a procedural thing we need to do.
Thank you. Any further comments from the councillors? If not, I will ask Councillor Ennis to close.
Consider closing.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. 5.3, parking strategy status update report. I've been able to move a place. I know. Councillor Sheen and Councillor Murphy?
Councillor Sheen. Thank you, Mayor. As we've previously discussed, the parking strategy is very important to communities because, well, I guess because it's revenue raising capacity, but also, as we've known in the CBA corps, parking is the lifeblood of retail. So a lot of work is going into the report and the innovation by council staff when I committed to council.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's interesting, the report notes that we still do, there's 25 actions, one's still ongoing, fifteen are in progress and eight are yet to be commenced. However, really pleasing the feedback that we're getting with respect to the old story combo, the fact that we do now have that sort of number plate recognition technology, that's not the number plate technology. However, I think we've got bigger challenges outside of the car park coming, I think. However, that is something that our staff will handle diligently. And yes, the next year's report, I think, will be a little bit more interesting than this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors?
Question?
Councillor Hollister?
I believe that all the new machines that call in and cars.
Yes.
This one across the road from Bowlet, and it looks like it's just a car, nothing else. That's what it is.
A new one?
Yes. It's just attached to a pole. But...
Who's answering? Through you, Mayor, the new technology or the new system the council has installed office goes. So we've got a number of machines that have been based around the city that is what you would deem to be a traditional parking bed, so they accept coins and card at the machine. We've also got the ability with QR tags, which is what you would have seen, which is a, I guess we might refer to as a virtual meter. So that enables people to pay with their card without having to go all the way down to the meter to do that. So we place them more frequent locations around the city.
I just know they exist, I call it that.
Thank you. Councillor Gilmour Chinskey.
Yes, I just want to commend the report and yes, we need to keep on going forward with it because it's pretty cool. And yeah, it's good for the community. I'm not sure what councillor Murphy was talking about, what's coming ahead of us, but for now, in the near future, I think we're fine.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? If not, shall I ask? Councillor Sheen, sir, please. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. 5.4 is the appointment of municipal recovery coordinator. If I could have a move please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second up?
Second up.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Mayor, it's all in the report, it's something we need. So, yeah, good luck.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister. You're large base to be on. Thank you.
It's important, remembering emergency areas, very important to this region. There's a field.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Gilmour Chinskey.
Just another hand, till we can, well done. I'm sure you'll cover it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? If not, Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider closing.
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? Carried unanimously. No, don't get there, please. 5.5 is the sponsorship agreement, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Sheen?
Again.
And Councillor Murphy? Councillor Sheen?
Thanks, Mayor. In my motion, I'm just noting that there was the study amount for netball and athletics, squash. There was a negotiated amount whereby council staff agreed with the applicant that $17,000 would be sufficient to run their event. So all things being equal, we'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
I think the deputy mayor, Councillor Sheen.
Thank you. Any further comments from the councillors? If not, Councillor Sheen to close? Consider closing, thank you. Consider it closed. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Bye bye. Against? Carried unanimously. One day we'll say bye together. Five point six is the council policy's annual review, if I can have a move of place.
So moved.
So can councillor Murphy and councillor Shane? Councillor Murphy.
Uh, yes, ma'am, this is just a follow on from the previous month, um, with all the necessary, um. Revised changes being adopted.
Thank you, councillor Shane.
Millipresential. Thank councillor Martin for his, um, suggestion amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the councillors? If not, councillor Murphy, you can close.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Five point seven, commercial Fogo services, these ability. So moved. Councillor Shane.
Second.
And councillor Murphy. Thank you. Councillor Shane.
Thanks, ma'am. Um, I think we had a good workshop discussion on this and while there was, um. A lot of, uh, goodwill towards trying to provide our commercial, uh, Fogo. I think it was pretty much agreed that at the moment it wasn't quite stacking up. Um, but council staff did come up with some, uh, ideas that we can consider. Um, contemplating and I hope we, um, come up with some successful results then. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Uh, ma'am, it is deja vu. I concur with Deputy Mayor and councillor Shane.
Oh, there you go. Any further comments from the councillors? Um, I will just comment, we've been here before, uh, when we started the Fogo discussion back in the day. Um, at the time it was just cost prohibitive. There was no reason why we would have said yes to it at the time. It was just ridiculous. Because we got to that point where we were able to work together with some other councils or able to make it something that could happen. And, uh, we certainly got there. It just takes a while. You've got to start somewhere. So this discussion has started. We will get there. Just at the moment, it's just, it doesn't make sense. Um, so we will. Rather this again into the near future because we haven't given up. Uh, I will ask councillor Shane to close. Consider it closed. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Five point eight is the sport football proposal. I'll move a place.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and councillor Shane. Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, yes, ma'am, look, this is, um, probably a, a good opportunity for the council. Um, obviously it's. Um, highly recommended, uh, by the author. Um. The five thousand dollar one off licensing fee, I think, you know, uh, you know. I think it's more than acceptable. Uh, eighteen months, they've got some really good, a really good track record, so, um, um. So, yeah, we've got, I think it's just something we, if, if we haven't got it, we know that it'll probably have an impact. So I think we should support it.
Lovely. Thank you. Councillor Shane.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, um, so there's no charge apart from the upfront licensing fee for this, um. So there's the thing that tipped me over the line was, um, looking at the other councils, looking at their website, you know, the, the councils that engage. Their services, it's, um, prolific. So, um, there's obviously some lessons learned, some data that can be added there. So I support the motion.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Um, I must admit, for one sentence there, it just gets me every time. The goal is to increase sports participation for people with disabilities and build long-term inclusive practices in the community. You can't do that without. So, um, I think this is a wonderful workflow, um, uh, situation that we're going to be in. So thank you. I hope that it gets improved. I will ask councillor Shane, Murphy to close.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Thank you. Uh, six is information, six point one is the workshops and briefing sessions, if I can have a move of place.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and second up councillor Innis. Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Um, thank you, ma'am. It's all there for people seeing. It's very exciting that, um, Avon Skin is going to be back bigger and better than ever.
Thank you. Councillor Innis.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, sorry. I'm particularly enjoying the unanimous link session and, uh. Uh, I enjoyed the others too. It was particularly enlightening for me. Please support it.
Lovely. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Moving along. Six point three of there, but, oh, sorry, lovely. I mean, it's one sweet report. Do I have a move of place?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councillor Murphy and councillor Shane. Councillor Murphy.
Um, it's just seems to get bigger, man.
I need some leave. Go on. Thank you, councillor Shane.
Yeah, I think it's quite a good idea that you take it away because for this season, man, that's getting even up there. Um. I'm really interested in the, um, catch up you had with, um. Richard Miles and, and Urquhart regarding the Don River Railway, those one and two upgrades that. If we can get that train on nine long, it's gonna be a game changer for tourism in the region.
Wonderful.
And. I'd really love you to tell us that, um. Could be cranes over at the Don River. We've got cranes everywhere. When we're gonna get one at, uh, Don River Railway, please.
Yeah, look, um, it was great to have our, well, at the time he was our acting crime minister. Richard Miles here, um, he was like a boy with a toy when he got into that train and pulled the whistle. He's very happy. Um. It was wonderful to see them there so he could really understand what we're trying to achieve there. And I suppose, um. And her car could see why she said yes to the funding. Um, the phases that they did have were probably in three sections. They brought it back to two, which is very sensible. Um, they didn't actually get all the funding that they wanted, but it's certainly a great chunk of the amount of money that they did get. And we're very grateful. Um, yes, so they're going to get on with it. Um, it's very exciting. I suppose now there'll be sensibility study. It'll be coming to a, a November, November workshop. I've just been told by our members, so you go. So that'll be great. So we'll get a complete update then. And that'll be very exciting. Um, I, I agree. Twenty years in the making. And, you know, a big shout out to everyone that's been involved and we've had so many people there. And, uh, it's time. So thank you. I will ask, uh, E, for the comments or questions from the councillors.
Yes.
This councillor's options.
Following on with the, yeah. The Don River Railway, I think. Previous councillor, Lynne Lightcock, will be very happy as well. She's put a lot of our hours and effort as all the volunteers have, but it's great to see. So, I agree on the line ASAP. Good.
Thank you. If not, if there's no further comments, I will ask councillor Murphy to close.
To, uh.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Six point three is the C, as reported, if I could have a move of place.
So moved.
Councillor Hollister might have just been councillor Murphy. Thank you, councillor Hollister.
City has been as busy as.
You need to patrol under the line. Well, thank you.
City has been as busy as it always is. I don't know if there's anything other specific to ask a question about. It good?
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Um, ma'am, I, I did note in the, um, the C E O's report that, uh, again, it, it really highlights. The, um. The organisation when, um, at the State Conference of Local Government Professionals held here, um. One of the key speakers was our very own, uh, Deputy C E O, Mr Jack Griffiths. When you look at the other key speakers in that group. Um, that's, that's a, that's a point and achievement in my opinion. When we've got. Uh, Brendan Garland, the futurist of the Bonner Label, or Mayor Steve Garwood. Um, as well as workplace culture expert Simon Tyson. So, um, well done. And so again, um. Just highlights, um. How, how recognised the local city councillors at that level. So, well done.
That's right, you said you're on two.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Innis.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a, a question. I noticed that you're very busy leading the, uh. Or chair of the C E O of the T T line. What good news did they have?
Uh, three ahead. They've been, um, keeping us informed of regular updates and, um, this morning we had another. Call where they were very sure of themselves that they're on track for October twenty sixth. New birth, that's. Which year? In October twenty sixth. Off.
Any further comments?
Question.
Councillor Hollister.
The best input community. Neighbourhood House. Certainly thoroughly developed. We, I, I'm all of downstairs, I believe it's condemned. We're not allowed to use it. So that's. Maybe we do do a new facility somewhere else.
Yeah, through you, ma'am. The, um, state governor allocated three hundred thousand. In a previous budget to do a fertility study into, um, where they might do a new facility for the neighbourhood. Uh, previously with Mr Hinch, uh, following the, the election that's now been transferred to, uh, Mr Goboy. And, um, the mayor and I had a chance to have a video, uh, meeting with the chief staff. I mean, last week, I think, just for update on that, they rung, I guess they, that. Uh, because it's new to her portfolio, she's just starting to, to get into it and, um, picking up where Roger left off, so. There was nothing really to report.
Good.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, I'll ask you, anyway, to close the discussion, councillor Ross. We need to put July back on, let's stop pressing. Or is it just coming on?
Oh.
Put it back on. Now you need to close the.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Wonderful. Six point four is the monthly operational report. If I could have a move of place.
I know.
Councillor Hollister and a second up place. So second. Councillor Milczynski, thank you. Councillor Hollister.
It is, it's all there for everybody to read. I'll be there, by the way.
Thank you, councillor Milczynski.
Um, Tisho, um, it is there. It's a great spread, but, uh, we haven't got Damien. The councillor finally here to help us out with questions. But, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors?
North Street, demolition. Turn the forward on North Street.
Come on, we've changed this one off again. Are you asking any questions?
Yes, um. Demolition, turn the forward on North Street.
Through you, ma'am. What would you question, the councillor Hollister?
What about demolition?
Yeah. That's a really brain question, councillor Hollister. Um. Yeah, don't know off the top of my head. More than happy to look up the application. Um, bearing in mind that, that the list that's provided there for you is a list of, um, planning applications that have been, um. Approved under delegations. I haven't counted the council table for awareness. Um, but yeah, happy to get you further details about applications as well.
Me too.
Lovely. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, ma'am. Um, I'll continue my tradition. Um, just interesting that, um. We had a negative nine percent variance in our budget throughout car park mission. So. Does seem that, um, majority of our parts were all sort of in the negatives on submitting thing. So whether that was just a sign of the times or. Was there, um. A variation in when the information was provided? Do you think that?
Kuzlansky, yeah, through you, ma'am. Uh, I wasn't anticipating that question from councillor Murphy and I provided some additional commentary in the notes section under the. Uh, tape under the graph there for you. There's a number of, um, items that we were able to identify. Um, banking of cash, we're, it's gone, it was, um, two weeks, um. There was a two weeks away, so that makes a big difference with the, um, obviously for the revenue. Um, and we also made some assumptions as to when the timing for the installation of the two meters and, uh. Timing for the new meters. And so that's a month behind, so, um. Why does it make a difference? The new three years won't come into effect until the new meters are turned on. So we're expecting. Additional revenue in September from those, and that didn't eventuate. So it's a month behind, if that makes sense. Um. From what, from the work that we've done on that, we're expected to be back on budget by the end of the year. So we're not concerned in that one view.
Yeah, good.
Lovely. Thank you. Further comments, questions? I will just, um. When I point out how, um, it was wonderful having that freedom of entry event, um, those young people that came through as the cadets. It was just so heartening and so lovely to have them, um, be treated so well by the community. There was so many people there to watch it. Not just their parents, the family and friends, but it was really lovely to have it in the wall and to really make a big deal about these young. Future stars, um, and I hope they go onto really bigger and better things because it's just lovely to see how polite they were and how grateful they were. That was just an absolute pleasure. And also our citizenship ceremony, one another pleasure that we always get to do. Um, so many, I think there was thirty seven, correct? Um, there, and, you know, just to say thank you to them, the choosing here to live. And to become citizens of Australia here and to choose this country to come and live, you know, it, it's a big deal. They go through, some people. Some were seventy years, some were eleven years, some, one was fifteen. It's taken fifteen years to become a citizen here in this country. And that just shows how they really, really, really want to be here. And, um, it was very impressive and they were just a wonderful group of people and it's just one of the nicest things we get to do, um, at this council. So I just wanted to point that out while we had the opportunity. But if not, I will be, um, the councillor, councillor Innis.
I'm sorry, I'm slow. Just a, a couple of things, uh. I noticed that, uh, from Sky and City was, uh, visited number ten on the hit list. Of, uh, the council website. Do we keep a recorder? Is there any way of keeping a record of how many people attend? You know, and watch.
Down there.
Yeah, watch the Sound of Night show. Is there any way or is there anything or do we just think it's really good? And just go with that?
Good question. What checks? I haven't decided, no, Mr Skid.
Through you, ma'am. No, councillor, it's an unattended event, free to access. There is, um, CCTV camera covering the area, which we do. Observe from time to time, but we also do, uh, do track social media commentary. That last. Um, spike was related to the damage caused by the, the weather event, uh, most likely. Um, and certainly some of the people move the data that we access periodically. In terms of, uh, destinations within the C B D, which is, um, tracking people movement through other methods. Typically social media accounts on mobile phones. And we do access that data from time to time as well.
So it's, uh, are they a good sponsor?
Waterfront Park, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Uh, well, I'm now asking councillor Hollister to vote.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Uh, six point five is the movement that's of the order panel, if I can have a move of place.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second up? Councillor Hollister, councillor Murphy.
Excuse me.
Thank you, councillor Hollister.
That can put the way.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I will ask the people, councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Seven is the close session, if I can have a move of place. Councillor Shane and councillor Murphy? Councillor Shane. Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Yeah, I agree again.
Start with you too.
Hat trick.
I was counting. Any further comments or questions for the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Shane to close. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. We'll move into closer, uh, for that session for seven fourteen. And we'll go into the close session very shortly. Thank you very much. And thank you.